Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank everyone for their attendance. The minutes can reflect the will follow the various trustees and staff. Let's move on to item three. Tonight we have a public hearing for the village board regarding access to Coip Road. If I give our statement in this place.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather input and submit a resolution to the town of Cedarburg to request connection of the proposed road in the Stonewall Farms subdivision to Coip Road.
Okay, Jesse, you want to get this one off?
Certainly. Excuse me, second. Uh, the reason for the public hearing this evening, as mentioned, was is to take uh feedback regarding a pending resolution before the village board, which would authorize the application of a permit to alter a alter a highway on a line between the town of Cedarburg and the village of Grafton. In particular, this would be the access point from a proposed residential development um at Highway sixty and Coip Road known to be known as Stonewall Farms um to access onto um Coip Road near its southern terminate or southern intersection with uh Highway sixty. Um, it was a town's preference um to maintain the entire Coip Road right of way uh within the township rather than divide the responsibility between the village and the town for this section of Coip Road. Uh, the town is requiring that the village obtain a highway permit uh per Wisconsin statutes, chapter eighty-two, in order to connect the proposed street in the Stonewall Farms uh residential subdivision to Coip Road. That said, chapter eighty-two of the statutes uh states that the village must introduce a resolution to authorize the application um being submitted to the township. As part of that authorization of a resolution, um, it does require a public hearing. The proper notices were placed and uh we have it on the agenda this evening.
All right, thank you. So as a public hearing, again, the item that is really up for public hearing is just around the submitting of the application to the town for the um access to Coip Road. So um I didn't see anybody on the side tree, so open it up to the public for any comments or questions they may have on this topic. Open up to anybody online. Open it up to any trustees this time.
So when we uh when we submit the application, is that something that can be checked in by the town of Cedarburg possibly?
It depends between the developer and the town. The village is not found in any way. We're not involved on the book. Any other questions?
I don't know. Go ahead. So will this affect um snow plowing then if Cedarburg maintains um that piece of road widely?
We would have to um talk to them at that point in time whether or not it makes sense for us to drop the plow for that short section to get into the village subdivision, or if they want us to leave the plow up and drive into the village subdivision, that that would be something that would, that's a detail that would have to be hashed out.
Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, may I kindly ask that everybody speak into their microphone? It's really hard to hear them on this end if they're not into the microphone.
Sorry.
Again, uh, any final comments, questions? This is just the application. All right, with that being said, I'll ask the village board to take your comfortable action or decide tonight.
Yes.
Okay, that being said, we'll go ahead and close portions of the public hearing and we'll move into our regular agenda. So about item four, uh, moving to item five, there's been a motion for approval of the minutes from the eleven-one village board and file the ten-twelve public safety committee meeting minutes. This is what the minutes has proven.
Second.
Second.
Any comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes? Any on favor?
Right.
That motion passes. Anybody in the audience who should be heard on an announcement?
Sure. Um, I just wanted to take a minute. Trustee left is not going to make that out. At the uh veterans dinner on Saturday night, I just wanted to thank Cap Coe for providing a monetary donation for the dinner for veterans.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to item eight. Any uh information presented in the normal fashion. Let's move on to item nine. Resolutions, ordinance, action items. Item A is motion to approve a resolution authorizing the application to alter a highway on the line between the Thomas Cedarburg and the village of Grafton as presented. You know, there's a motion, but you have a motion to approve a resolution, so I'm assuming you want this in the form of resolution, which case not.
Correct.
I'll make motion.
Offer motion and we'll give Dan a second. On comments, hearing on paper.
Right.
Item B. That point. Um. Item, uh, there's two action items. The first one is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one this whole levy limit worksheet adjustment for prior years, unused levy carried forward in amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And Jesse, you want to take that one?
Certainly. As a point of clarification, in our conversations with the state of Wisconsin and uh clarifying how to um complete our municipal levy uh worksheet uh which we do each year uh when we certify our levy with the state of Wisconsin, um, they mentioned a separate distinct action uh would be required for that particular tax levy adjustment. The net new construction tax levy adjustment that we have taken historically over time um does not require that special action. The unused levy carried forward adjustment does in fact um require that additional um and separate action item. Um, so that said, we do have uh two action items before the village board this evening. Uh, one regarding that uh levy adjustment and then one regarding the uh program budget and associated tax levy as well. Uh, Mr. President, would you like me to give the summary regarding the budget as well? Or leave it at uh just the need, why the difference between the two actions at this point?
Question on why, I mean, this came up and was discussed at length at various uh at the workshop and at various meetings on why we're bringing forward the unused levy carried forward? Is anybody not clear on that?
Who they just asked question?
Absolutely.
So um it is this the first time that we've had a motion like this, a two-step process for the budget?
I can't remember us having uh the un- and the.
Unused.
Do it on.
Right. Correct. The net new construction levy adjustment that we historically taken regularly take and utilize does not require a separate action. Um, this particular unused levy carried forward does. Thankfully, the the state uh told us of that when we were working through our tax levy worksheet, so that way we can make sure to follow their proper protocols.
So we're we're really authorizing that money to carry forward and we're choosing to use that money especially to pay for the public works uh crew person? And then is the rest of that money going into the general fund?
It would be used to offset the use of fund balance. Correct. Right.
And in the past, we've we've not had that extra money. Did that occur because we did not have a lot of expenditures during COVID?
Nope. Actually, it occurred over the course of the last handful of years. Um, because prior to this year, expenditure restraint was our big cap. Complying with the expenditure restraint program was our big cap. And if the expenditure restraint cap actually gets um set based upon that consumer price index. So we've had fairly low consumer price index adjustments over the last handful of years. And so therefore, our expenditure restraint cap was lower. We literally could not levy X amount because we couldn't spend X amount. We we were down here at this expenditure restraint cap. So we only levied to that expenditure restraint cap. So we have that unused levy and that's been carried forward. And that is, I believe, a three or a five year.
Six years.
Oh, six years.
It's directly related to uh the year where our assessments were submitted late for the state of Wisconsin. So we should get our full next level of the worksheet and go after the.
So it was a while back. Um, so that said, that okay, so that levy then was out there, but again, we couldn't actually get to that point of collecting that levy because the expenditure restraint cap was here. Now with the consumer price index coming in at the three percent, all of a sudden that expenditure restraint cap is up here and we could actually utilize that levy adjustment and collect that unused levy carried forward. Um, so that is how it came to be. Um, it's literally unused levy that we could have gone and gotten, but there there wasn't any need to because we couldn't even, even if we went and got it, we couldn't spend it because of the expenditure restraint.
So can we not spend that money now for next year? Are we, are we choosing to put it into the fund balance to save it for other things?
Uh, it would offset uh the the need for fund balance. Um, we would be using it uh as a revenue um for next year. Um, uh, but it would help offset the use or the need for um fund balance usage.
I mean, that's maybe we were then.
Yeah.
We're we're using fund balance.
We are.
So basically, what this does, it lessens the need for us to use fund balance for um a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Right. Stuff.
It's kind of adding to our savings.
It's helping fund operations instead of using.
For savings, because we are using hundreds of thousands of dollars in fund balance.
Seven hundred and seventy.
Yeah, so I mean, we're. So we're not adding to the savings, we're lessening the impact to.
And that's correct. Yes. Yeah.
Other questions on this later?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I still have a couple. I'm sorry.
No.
Um, so you listed all the different things that could not happen if we don't move this money forward.
Uh, they would need to be considered. I can't say they would not happen because again, the the village board makes the the final budget decisions, but those are things that would need to be considered. Um, if the board chooses not to um utilize this uh unused levy carried forward adjustment, things we'd have to consider, we'd have to talk about.
But this doesn't really um moving the levy forward and putting it in fund balance, does that, it doesn't really affect the fire department's changes for the budget for next year? Because that money for the fire department position is going to come from their their own fund balance, correct? Their own capital.
Right, there's a portion of that firefighter or paramedic that would come from um the tax levy that goes into the capital equipment fund. Um, and something we would have to consider, if this adjustment were not taken, that would limit the overall amount of tax levy that we have. And we would have to think about, okay, if we are now limited by uh one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars less available tax levy, with that tax levy we have remaining, where do we want to program that? Do we want to program as much into the fire department capital fund? Or program as much into the fire department or program as much into public works or program as much into general government? Because there'd be less levy available. Um, so hence it'd be um uh things for us to discuss, situations for us to discuss as to what would we adjust with our uh twenty twenty-two budget to lessen it by one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars? So it wouldn't necessarily fall in one particular place. It'd be open for discussion.
Any questions?
Yeah.
So Jesse, maybe I.
Nope, that's okay.
Something you said, some of this money is going to go to DPW to fund the new.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Can can we take some of this money and help the fire department with the twenty thousand dollars that they're looking for?
In essence.
What's that? I'm sorry.
All right, I'll let Jesse answer.
Okay, um. What we did is look to find um because this is a one-time uh levy adjustment. And what that does is provides a kickstart to that public works position. Um, the rest of it was helped to offset um general fund balance usage. Um, with that kickstart to the DPW position, um then over time, with improved technologies and additional tax levy coming online, the public works position becomes sustainable. Um, with the fire department position, what was discussed with regards to utilizing the levy coming out of their capital equipment fund, that was their sustainability option with regards to that particular staff position. Because at the end of the day, you don't want to program fund balance for staffing or ongoing costs. And our biggest ongoing cost are staff. And so um this here helps kickstart that, not the entire one sixty-six, but a portion of it helps kickstart that public works position, but it doesn't, you know, fund it in its entirety. The remainder of that one sixty-six is broken out uh elsewhere um and just diluted as a general revenue in the general fund to help offset the use of fund balance.
However, we could use twenty thousand dollars to kickstart the additional fireperson. Same same type of principle.
It it could, but I do believe that would require then if we use that levy into the the fire department special revenue fund for the general fund operations, we would have to plug in additional fund balance. So what we're trying to do is mitigate the amount of fund balance being used within the um general fund, still accomplish that that public works position and still accomplish the add of the firefighter paramedic position. Um, and keep down the use of or the need for additional fund balance being used within the general fund.
Can ignore the general fund trend right now? It looks, if we continue using this without um trying to find other sources of using fund balance in twenty twenty-six, we will have no fund balance in the general fund, which is a main operating one of the village. So we need to mitigate the use of fund balance in the general fund. It's very important.
Hmm. Hence, the thought process behind reallocating tax levy that's going to the fire department instead of X to or the one fifty-six to the equipment fund. Um, less twenty thousand dollars of that levy to the equipment fund would go to the operations fund to help um fund the July hire of firefighter paramedic.
Yeah, I was just going to say to what Paul said, um, I mean, obviously, we're we're not going to do this on a, you know, yearly basis. We're going to be asking for it to come out of fund balance, you know, for the firefighter paramedic position. And because the town is partially paying something um their um money that they contribute to the capital fund, um, it looks like we only have some up of twenty-one thousand dollars. I guess I I I do think that that's not a lot to have to take out of that amount that we're going to roll over. Um, and again, it's not going to happen year after year. So.
Well, I think the what I'm hearing though is for the programming that is being brought to the board requires the move to forward levy. And what we do with it is is question two. So I think everybody agrees that we do need to maximize the levy in order to fund the programs that have been requested to manage village various departments and programs.
So with that thought though, um, if we took twenty-one thousand dollars out of this, wouldn't we just be asking to move forward an unused levy amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars then? I mean, isn't that an option?
Nope. Um, what that would do is just, we we would claim that one sixty-six eight twenty-five of the levy. Um, I think what you're saying though is out of that because that that adjustment goes into the overall pot of tax levy that we would collect. Um, the the uh um based upon our value plus the net new construction plus this unused levy carried forward, that gives the levy, that that is our primary revenue. And then from there, that levy, think of it as a pie, is broken out into different pieces across different programming areas. So there's a slice of um um forty 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 thousand dollars to the park and open space fund. There's a slice of the um one hundred and uh thirty thousand dollars to the fire and capital equipment. There's a slice of levy support to the library. There's a slice of support to the fire department special revenue fund for operations, um which again is based upon that that capital uh change. There's a slice to the capital improvement, slice to capital equipment and so on. And so the long and short of it is if, and then a slice of that is fund balance. So if we use if we specifically take this, what we have programmed as a general fund revenue, this one sixty-six eight twenty-five, if we change that and lower that, then our use of fund balance within the general fund would expand, that that pie piece would have to get bigger because that tax levy goes uh somewhere else. Um, so that's how it's programmed right now. And hence, looking at a sustainability model for that firefighter paramedic, which is why we talked about the the one-year take out of the capital equipment fund for the fire department. Um, and then look to research other options in coming years. Um, but at the end of the day, at the very least, that capital equipment fund could help offset or fund that firefighter paramedic position. Now, we made it very clear at our last uh meeting though, that that is a, the goal here is to have that one-year take, that one year of about twenty thousand dollars out of that um capital equipment. So instead of one fifty-six, it would be one thirty-six to the capital and then twenty grand um up into the operations. Um, now, next year at this time, we'll be talking about reestablishing that one fifty-six and then how to address the operations with the the additional um staff member there. Um, so that that's where we landed with the the budget that's in front of everybody.
But I I don't want money.
Yeah.
Jesse?
Uh, yes.
Jesse, quick question.
Oh, one second, Dan.
Any of any portion of the unused levy carried forward basically removes that amount from the total levy that we can then uh use for uh twenty twenty-two projects, right? I mean, it's not like you can't take it from the, you can't take twenty thousand or whatever out of the unused levy carried forward and allocate it. You have to, you have to completely grab it and then decide how you want to allocate.
Correct. Yeah, it's a, from the state's perspective or the worksheet, it's you want to approve the carryover and then secondary issues like.
Okay, um, Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question here. I I'm referring to the uh public safety committee meeting from uh October fifteenth. And uh I I see that Chief Bryce stated that the our our revenues for the ambulance service is coming in around a hundred thousand dollars, which according.
Dan, if I could have you one second, please. I'm having an audio issue here. Let me um reset this and I'll bring you back online.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dan.
Hello? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, that was to repeat what I was saying. Uh, what I was re- uh just repeating here, I I'm looking at the notes from the public safety committee from October twelfth of uh this year. And uh Chief Bryce reported that uh that the twenty twenty-one estimated revenue is going to be a hundred thousand dollars, which was quote a substantial increase over uh the previous years. My question on this is if our numbers continue to climb like we anticipate that they are, are we also going to be generating additional revenue which might offset the need to tap that uh capital equipment fund to fund the uh the uh paramedic firefighter? Correct?
As I recall, that was part of our discussion um at the last meeting with regards to um helping to ensure that our goal here is that that adjustment to the tax levy support to the fire department capital equipment fund is a one-year thing. Um, at the end of the, at the end of the day, we have to discuss this again next year, but with the goal being it'd be a one-time um to to kickstart that fire medic position. And to your point, that that additional revenue is expected.
So it could be that by the time that we do get to adding this individual um that we could actually have them funded by additional uptick in the services um above and beyond what may have been budgeted. Correct?
It could be, yes. Um, our revenue forecasts are brought to us by Ebix and we ask them to be conservative with those.
All right, Ella, you know, I think this is all the conversation I think is going to come into the second motion, but uh is there any further questions on the uh bringing forward the unused levy carry forward motion?
This is different one. So so you're saying that there's there was no way that we could use that money this year? So the money that we're carrying forward? Could we have used that money for things this year?
No, because we didn't adopt it as part of the twenty twenty-one budget. We did not look to um uh bring forward this levy adjustment for the twenty twenty-one budget. So last fall, the fall of twenty twenty, we did not, staff did not present this option because again, expenditure restraint, we could spend this, taking that additional levy one of, we we couldn't spend it, we couldn't do it. So why would we impact the tax rate? Um, if if we would be looking to collect on, in essence, at that time, unnecessary tax levy?
This is really the only way.
Right, because again, consumer price index has put that expenditure restraint cap up here. So we have room to levy. We can actually utilize this and and levy more. And even with this adjustment, we're we are still um and the expenditures, we are still below that cap.
And this is the first part of the next part of the.
Yes, correct. Yep, yep.
So it'll allow us to go forward to talk about the next part of it.
Right, it's a separate distinct action for that parti- particular levy adjustment.
All right, so I'm gonna create a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one used for levy, and it's for the adjustment for prior years, unused levy carried forward in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion, second, final comments, questions? Very non-obvious.
Hi.
Hi.
That motion passes. The second is a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two annual program budget and establishing the twenty twenty-one tax levy. Um, obviously, there was uh some I wouldn't say negotiated, but I think there was some give and take at the last uh regarding um park and open space. I think there was some concession. I think there was some uh definitely some uh working out of where we're at. I just want to know if I was still.
Should be the twenty twenty-one tax levy.
Twenty-one, twenty twenty-one tax levy.
Yeah.
Right, it's tax levy. We begin collecting in twenty-one for use in twenty-two.
Right to the twenty twenty-one tax levy.
There we go.
All right, so we had at the last um, at the last board meeting, uh, when we had the public hearing, uh, we did have extensive discussion and we had uh some changes that were requested to be made. Uh, you know, the biggest one obviously was around the open space fund and another five thousand two hundred and forty. Uh, is there any final conversations or questions that we have not discussed in previous meetings that we wanted to bring up?
I I would quickly add, um, staff will offer, uh, go on record and offer a um slight change to the process uh for next year whereby updated budget pages when um distributed, we will highlight changes. We cannot track change because that creates an unreadable document, but we can highlight on um the the updated, the the new budget pages that are issued, we can highlight um where the changes occur, so they're easier to identify. Um, staff wants to go on record and offer that uh based upon conversations uh in the meantime that we've had.
Thank you. I think that would be beneficial.
Certainly.
We did discuss that last year as well.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get it on the floor for either discussion or interaction. I'm gonna create a motion to approve a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two annual program budget and establishing the twenty twenty-one tax levy. That is a resolution, so it takes an offer motion to second.
How long for this?
On second.
So we'll offer and give you the motion. Can I have me a second?
A second.
A second. Offer motion, second. Uh, well, I know we've talked about it at length, but I will give uh, we need four or five minutes. Are you not any questions? Let's go ahead and. You're not.
Okay, all right. Well, nobody else is saying anything. Um, so um there's a couple of things, actually quite a few things. Um, there are a lot of mistakes in the yellow documents, Jesse, still. Um, page by page, there I have a list of things. There are some pages that I don't see that it was even changed. Can you just look at a few with me?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we we would be happy to sit down at any point to go through these.
Some of these are the same mistakes from last year. So I'm concerned about some of the so I assume that when we get the yellow sheets, that means there's been a change.
Yep, there's there should have been changes across each of the yellow pages, but okay.
So there's a number of pages, there's a number of pages here that I really can't find the change. I can't, I mean, to me, the numbers are exactly the same. Um, so here's an example. So let's go to page fifty-three. Wait, uh, hold on. Fifty three, wait, uh, hold on. So, page two sixty nine.
Seven, three seventy one, those three, there's no changes.
So I, so I want to ask a question first about those, so.
So yeah, that, what happened there is the twenty twenty two column has changed. However, I didn't catch that the page range was, wasn't reset to include twenty twenty two.
So does that mean we should have gotten another column there, Paul, on twenty twenty two?
Twenty nineteen comes off, so it should be twenty twenty.
Oh, and then twenty two, okay, so.
Also just want to point out that the detail, what you're proving tonight is just the numbers and the tax levy. All this stuff really isn't being one quarter approved. It's just for the document.
So some of these mistakes are left over from last year and I, I'm concerned about that. Again, we're getting something that's not updated, I mean, these numbers right here on page two sixty nine, um. So I understand that twenty twenty two is not in there. But if this is a document from last year, let's say, it says that public safety has only thirty two employees. At the police department and they have thirty three. On page two sixty nine. Which is also the same mistake that keeps being carried over. Um, in the police department area. Where it says that there's thirty two employees and there's thirty three. So I, I, I mean, I'm concerned, I, I, I know and I think you talked about it last year that. I guess the specifics are not, it doesn't matter, but I, I don't know how. How we authorize that, Chief Captain Aaron has thirty three employees, not thirty two. And the page that I referred to. Last time about the, the police department where it kind of breaks out the non administrative officers. Um, that page wasn't even included, I think that was page. Two sixty nine, maybe, so we didn't get a corrected page for the police department there. So if you look at in your.
Well, it's page one twenty one.
So if you look at.
Is the uh administrative chart for that department?
In, in the original budget?
Well, yellow page.
But that says thirty two employed, uh, thirty three employed.
What's our thirty three?
So we can, you know, things can be easily fixed. Um, I guess the question is, is the annual program budget, the levy that's being requested. To do the program that is identified, you know, then changes throughout the year. Look, we do need to establish the twenty twenty one task light. So, yes, every program will probably some, see some sort of modification depending on how events. Transfer, you know, how, how things, you know, move through the year. Uh, how priorities may or may not change, but at this point. The request is to approve the annual program budget, which is in front of you. And establish the twenty twenty one tax level. How it gets detailed out over the course of the year will be determined at committee and or level.
Well, the other thing in the action item says that you're asking for us to approve the personnel schedule. As presented in the budget and the personnel schedule is not even accurate.
So that's not in the action item, though. The action item is to approve the resolution that passing the twenty two annual program budget, not.
Be it further resolved, if the personnel schedule is presented in the twenty twenty two budget, be approved, that's in the resolution. And I, I.
That could be stricken.
You know, days looking at every sheet and some of these yellow sheets, there aren't, there are no corrections. So we've spent our time looking at these sheets with multiple mistakes and I guess I can't authorize a budget with incorrect paper.
Right, so, um.
I would ask that we get the correct paper back.
I mean, does the board feel good about saying that with uh the adjusted police uh personnel?
There's other things in here, so in one area, the Department of Public Works doesn't have their extra person in it on. Well, that's not on there either, so there are multiple mistakes, I have two pages.
I think what could be done here.
Last year. So that's a concern.
What we could do, um, strike from the uh resolution, uh, strike, be it further resolved, the personnel schedule. Um, that, that can be stricken from this resolution. Um, whereby we did speak to during the workshops, what personnel changes would occur. There, um, it was made abundantly clear, there are no additional um police officers or police personnel included within the budget. Um, the only changes personnel wise would be the reclassification of the fire department admin assist from part time to full time. Addition of a firefighter paramedic and addition of a D P W crew person. And any other um ministerial um. Items that, that were, were found, um, actually wouldn't apply. It is, uh, I, I would hope that our presentation made it abundantly clear as to what specifically the personnel schedule, how it would be impacted. Um, that being said, uh, for the resolution, uh, simply strike the, be it further resolved. The personnel schedule as presented, uh, be approved. Um, because quite frankly, if there are any other items that happen to be overlooked where somebody would be added. That, that's not funded, it's, it's not, uh, it's, it's not um programmed.
First meeting in December is the, like, just a factor resolution, is add that. Line to that resolution, first meeting in December.
So.
So I believe in the edits, it's correct in there, just the wrong.
So again, I mean, I have two pages, some of the yellow pages that you've given me are supposed to. You know, changes, I cannot find the changes, which makes me worry that either we are missing something as a village. It's not being moved correctly from the original budget to the yellow page. Or did we get the yellow page by accident and there's really no change. So I can't anticipate vote for the budget with, with mistakes. Again, coming to me in these fifty five pages.
I would respectfully request, if, if there's that many concerns, i- if we could have gotten a message ahead of time, we could have reissued pages. Frankly, we, we. I, I.
All weekend going through it, including today, fifty five pages that, you know, we were told last week when we asked. That that was too much work for the staff to look at, to show us the changes.
They don't keep track of change documents, so that is recurring.
All right, so let's, let's just give passes, um, we have an offer motion second. Uh, we offer motion second, people that make this are comfortable with moving that personnel schedule as presented in twenty two. Budget be approved, be removed, obviously, we all have discussed at length. You know, what the different departments have for staffing, there clearly is no room for adding any. Any other staffing that already doesn't exist.
I, I, I like what Paul has suggested, Paul would say, uh, resolve that personnel schedule as presented. December.
Correct, we'll just change it from the twenty twenty budget as presented.
Because there's a reference and I think the personnel schedule, because it has been discussed as part of the budget, should remain in this resolution.
So how do you want this voted then?
Oh, we've done at the December. Okay. December sixth meeting.
Well, I, you had said the first.
Yeah.
Board meeting in December.
Yeah.
Or if you say December sixth.
What are you, what are you suggesting that, you, you table this?
No, that we, that we change the language and be it further resolved that personnel schedule as presented rather than. Say as presented in the two thousand twenty two budget that we rephrase it to say as presented at the first village board meeting in December.
Okay. Dave, you okay with that?
Yes.
You need okay with that?
All right, so. To be clear, you're, you're agreeing that the personnel schedule will come back to you at the first meeting in December.
I'm just gonna just minimize them. So then, um, if, if that's gonna go forward, that's, that's fine for the board. Um, I just want to record that again, um, I'm going against the budget because the fire department, the only department is a village. Is that I have the money for their position taken out of their own capital fund and that would not be asked of any other department.
Okay, we'll go ahead and follow up, follow up question, uh, offer motion second on favor, aye.
Aye.
And I see you show hands for, one, two, three, four, and again, one, two, three, motion, resolution tasks. Let's move on to item ten, department and officers reports.
Yep, I got my notes here, uh, in your um email inbox. Uh, you should have received a citizen of the year ceremony invite um from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, that is scheduled for um Sunday, the twenty first. Um, at seven P M with uh the award ceremony at seven thirty. Um, so that said, uh, please take a look at that and R S V P directly back to the Chamber of Commerce, please. Okay. Uh, speaking of great segue, uh, trustee Antoine, uh, the village Christmas tree uh was um, um, picked up and is on its way to town. Um, the public works department uh picked up the village tree as, this morning at Sand Hill Farms. And will be placed in Paramount Plaza for the lighting ceremony, um, looking forward to that. Um, a staffing item uh for the village board this evening, Cindy Gager. Uh, the village's assessment technician for the last fourteen years, um, has announced her retirement, uh, will be effective in early January. Um, considering we may have to work around um interview schedules and having individuals having to give notice. We did post the position um out on our website and other venues. Um, hoping to gather interest and, and move forward with the recruitment um as quick as we can. That said, um Cindy's experience and customer service abilities and, and help will be missed. Uh, we do wish her the best uh with that upcoming retirement. A couple of holiday programs kicking off, uh, one in the police department being the safe package program whereby residents. Can have their packages delivered to the police department for safekeeping, um, this helps keep the porch pirates at bay, if you will. Um, the library is also uh holding a food for fines program whereby up to five dollars in late fees can be forgiven. Uh, with the donation of non perishable food items, so a couple of uh, uh, nice holiday programs being offered uh by a few of our departments. Um, here this holiday season, uh, that is my update this evening. Yes, sir.
Also, uh, to gather a. Parking.
Yep. Yep. Um, so the, the parking forgiveness, uh, just for everybody's information, uh, receive a parking ticket. Um, you can have a portion of that fine um, um, absolved uh with, through a food donation. Um, at the P D, so non perishable food items, so, um, some nice holiday programs there.
Well, Jesse, update on help for Amber in the D P W office and for. Help for Karen in the senior center, where we have a close to position.
Uh, we were gonna kick off recruitment for the um, um, senior center assistant with the uh onboarding of the new. Uh, parking rec director, I've talked with Karen about that and um she, she's. Um, understanding and, and thinks that's the, the appropriate way to proceed. Um, it would be the new parking rec directors hire in conjunction with uh Karen. Utility clerk position, we are exploring um several options, as you recall, we had the discussion following uh Mr. Roy's departure. About how to best meet the needs of the utility as it stands today. And uh that said, at the um, um, December uh finance committee meeting. Um, uh, director Thomas, assistant director Greece and myself will be bringing forward information for consideration about uh utility staffing. Um, and that said, it would be that um administrative assistant uh, uh type of position uh would be part of that discussion, so. Uh, we're, we're looking to uh move forward with those uh in a timely fashion.
Um, any, any thought, I know you've got kind of a.
No, it's okay.
Any thought on um, um, changing our newspaper of choice to the press? Is that something that you need to?
I, I have not had a chance to talk to the clerk about it, but it's something we can talk about and uh we can come forward to committee with.
Or something?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Well, it's codified, so it would have to come through committee to board, yep. Yeah, it would be something we'd have to come through committee, I, I can make it a point to check with the clerk's office and get that ball rolling to see. What the history is, why we are where we are and, you know, i- if change would be worthwhile, yep, no problem.
All right, let's move on. Uh, operator, so I think we have one individual.
Mr. President, I'll be getting sting.
Okay, I can motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
Move on item twelve for the bills, entertaining motion for approval of gorgeous expenditures here in sixty two thousand three hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty seven cents.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion a second, uh, back report on the bills and emails, any questions? Very not in all favor.
Aye.
That motion passes, thank you, I entertain a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen eighty five. One C, considering the plan of promotion conversation or performance evaluation data of any public employee. Over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to park and rec director turns of appointment.
We'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion a second, move forward.
Aye, aye, aye.
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 Yeah, closed session, how long do we expect closed session to take?
Uh, five to ten minutes.